Not surprised.
No, you are going to help me on the platform.
Yeah, and they're all in order, yeah.
Well, it should help.
Yep.
High school has significantly more than every other school.
I'd like to call the June 2019 Pacosa City School Board meeting to order. First is pledge to the flag. If you would please rise and pledge allegiance.
Our allegiance is in the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
And we'll go into recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as Dr. Carter makes his way over to the podium. We'd like to recognize our Odyssey of the Mind team members who were successful at the state competition. Six of Pacosa City Schools Odyssey of the Mind teams competed in this Virginia State Competition in April. The competition was extremely competitive with the best teams from the eight Virginia regions competing for a chance to advance to the world finals. Our teams once again proudly represented Pacosa with four second-place finishes. Pacosa now has had the distinct pleasure of competing at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals for nine consecutive years. Remarkably, this is the first time in the last 20 years that we've had four teams advance. These four teams represented Pacosa at the world competition in May. The teams competed with 899 teams from 37 states and 29 other counties, countries. We would like to begin our recognition of our elementary school team for finishing second at the state competition. I ask that the following members of the PES team come forward as their names are called. Michaela McDaniels.
Woo!
Evelyn Smith.
We might be missing couples. Charlie Libby.
Kyle Duckworth.
Ayla Wideman. No, Wideman. Sorry, it should be Wideman. I'd like to also recognize the coaches of the team, Mr. Norm Remchuck and Vanessa Lynn, if you would please come forward as well. Let me, let me read a little bit about them. The team presented a humorous and lighthearted performance about the day of a group of elderly superheroes. Not quite out of action yet, the group finds trouble at the local carnival through a devious, cheating carnival barker. Determined to catch him in the act, the heroes play their way through three fully functional games of skill and chance. At last, they are able to catch him and put things right. The team performed spectacularly while incorporating elements of brilliant color and creative prop design. They certainly had a marvelous time. At world finals, the team competed against 52 other teams, placing 14th. Please join me in once again congratulating these students for their success. Now, I'd like to recognize the Pacosa Middle School Structure Team who placed second in the Virginia State Competition. Would the following students please come forward? Cameron Brewer.
Dylan Robinson.
A.K. Smith.
Jason Morgan.
And again, I ask that our coaches come forward. So again, Mr. Norman Remchuck and Sandy Brewer, please. So the middle school team's performance was out of this world. They created a space-themed carnival with funny creatures, space-themed games, and space robots. Their adventures started by catapulting their structure 10 feet through the air. Their skit included a miniature whack-a-mole game. They cleverly incorporated a six-inch-tall robot made out of a USB camera and other junk and a six-foot-tall robot with a monitor as its head for a live display of the miniature robot actually playing the game. The team performed spectacularly while incorporating elements of brilliant color and creative prop design. At the world finals, the team had their highest weight held of the year with 790 pounds. At world finals, the team competed against 64 other teams and placed fourth. Please join me in congratulating these students as well for their success. Now for the Pacosa High School Vehicle Team, if you'd please come forward as I call your name. Kate Elliott. Cooper Martin. Colton Wojowoda. And I just might ask that the coaches for this team come forward. Chris McDaniels, Troy Wojowoda, and Chad Donovan, please. I must say, I love the capes. Let me read a little bit about our high school team. The high school vehicle team designed and constructed a ride-on vehicle in which all vehicle parts had to be fit into two suitcases of limiting size. The vehicle was assembled, disassembled, and reassembled throughout the performance to complete multiple rescues and be honored in a parade. The vehicle was propelled by a team member using two custom gears the students made out of a half, out of half-inch plywood. The team captivated the audience with humor, creative costumes, a six-foot tornado, a tree constructed of hundreds of acorn tops and pine cone scales, and a backdrop that transformed into three unique and highly artistic backgrounds. The team put on their best performance of the year, representing Pacosa in the Odyssey of the Mind fashion, at world finals. At world finals, the team competed against 45 other teams and placed 12th. Please join me in congratulating these students for their success. And now we have Pacosa High School Structure Team, so please come forward as I call your name. Avery Baker. Colby Baker. Kaitlyn Stone. Sean Stanton. Brody Weston. And if one more time, Coach Norman Remchuck would come forward, please. The high school structure team artistically created a carnival-themed presentation with scenes from the present, future, and past where a cursed contestant had to travel through time to find out why she never wins any games. From their rotating backdrop into their functioning Ferris wheel, the team incorporated authentic carnival games and rides surrounded by vibrant and colorful scenery. The team entertained the audience with their animated carnival barker, enthusiastic cheerleaders, and their humorous cheer routine, with two of them hoping their coach never posts the video. At the world finals, the team had their highest weight held of the year with 905 pounds. At world finals, the team competed against 53 other teams and placed 14th. Please join me in congratulating these students for their success. And let's one more time congratulate all of these students for their success, and I'm suspecting you all wouldn't mind one picture of all of them if we can get all of the students in front of the screen before we... All have to squeeze in.
Elementary right here. You guys up front, your shorts. Middle school behind you.
Coaches, you could be in the picture, too. Capes? No, coaches in the picture. Coaches, yep. Got to have the capes in the picture. Love it. Get to see the back.
You're up front, Troy. You're up with the elementary school.
So no pressure for next year, but it would be nice to have the same number going to worlds again, so. I know, I know many of you will do it again. Pardon? All right.
Our OM teams always have a great showing, so thank you all for your work. Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll go into presentations and reports.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I would like to take this opportunity to review the annual listing of donations received by the schools over the past year. These donations are included in the agenda items at each school board meeting upon receipt, but this will give you an opportunity to see a full list of the donations received throughout the past school year, and you will find a list at your seat. Schools receive donations from a variety of sources, including individuals, churches, civic organizations, parent-teacher organization, Pacosa Education Foundation, and the Box Tops for Education. These donations have been provided for a variety of uses, such as student needs for field trips, the Veterans Project, and a variety of classroom supplies and equipment. Various clubs, such as the Drama Club, DECA Club, and OM, were supported with the donations for conference and competition fees. Programmatic support included donations for the PHS band and chorus departments. There has also been support for the athletic teams, and the PTO provided $16,500 for the PHS after-prom event. This year, the schools received over $80,000, $87,000 in donations. This chart shows the breakdown of all donations combined. About 62% of these donations came from PEF and the PTOs. You can see these two at the top of the chart. PEF provided $27,263, or 31%, which was primarily for grants awarded to teachers, as well as OM, DECA Club, and technology equipment. The PTOs provided a total of $26,950, or almost 31%, which was primarily for classroom supplies at PPS, the Welcome Dinner for New Families, and after-prom at PHS. If we work our way around the bottom of the chart from right to left, other donations included $9,827 from other organizations, primarily for the OM World Competition, athletic teams, teacher appreciation, and classroom supplies. Kiwanis Club provided $7,050 for Teacher of the Year awards, chorus, Builders Club, OM, and other student needs. $4,500 was from the Pacosa Art League for art supplies at each school, as well as for OM. The ITA International Inc. provided $3,875 for two charter buses to DC for the Veterans Project. $3,025 was from Box Tops for PPS classroom supplies, as well as PES PE equipment. There was $1,500 from groups at the Tabernacle United Methodist Church, and $100 from Trinity United Methodist Church, primarily for supplies and field trip assistance. Band boosters provided $1,350 for the PHS band. The Pacosa Exchange Club provided $1,200 for OM and DECA. And $1,035 was received from individuals, primarily for the Veterans Project Drama Club and student lunch account assistance. We really want to thank all of those who provided these generous donations, as this will help our schools in so many ways. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question that's phenomenal and totals great. Do you know the largest amount ever contributed during a year? $87,000 this year, just wondering.
In the past few years, it has been more than this. It fluctuates, but it's approximately about the same, depending on the donations from each year, but very generous.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am. Next is operations update and modernization project. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, Mr. Papas is actually taking some much reserved and earned time off this week, so I am in place of him. So just to mention below, you see that we are bringing forward a renewal contract with Airmark. This is our second renewal with them. We've been very pleased with what we've been able to do with them in the past years. And in terms of the PMS Modernization Project, just so those who may be watching this evening, we did have our public input meeting for the modernization project last week at the elementary school, and we did have community members, as well as teachers and others, come to provide input. We do have a survey that is still out there, so we're asking anybody in the Pacosa community who would like to provide input into the project, so please take the survey. It's not just for school division employees or parents of our students or students themselves. We're hoping we get broad participation from throughout the community. You can access it by just going right to our homepage for our website, or if you call the school board office, we can even get you a hard copy if you'd like. So we are hoping that many people will take that. We are going to close that survey on Monday, the 24th, at about 5:00. So once we get, gather all of this input and provide it to the architects, they will then summarize that input and will begin working on the design of the renovation and modernization project. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Questions, comments there? Next instructional update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Sheeler, board members, and Dr. Parrish. Our instructional update this evening will provide you information about the ESSA application that's in your packet for approval tonight, as well as updates from our music department. As we do each June, we seek approval from you for the submission of our Every Student Succeeds Act Consolidated Grant Application. ESSA was approved in December of 2015, and it reauthorized the 50-year-old educational law known primarily what you all would have known as No Child Left Behind Act. Our application tonight includes a request for continued Title I, Title II, and Title IV funds. In 2019 and '20, PCPS will see a 34% decrease in our Title I Part A funding due to a decrease in the number of children ages 5 to 17 in the city of Pacosa who are living in poverty based on annual data collected by the state of Virginia. This funding will allow for us to provide supplemental support to meet the instructional needs of at-risk and homeless students, as well as support specific job-embedded professional development for our teachers and other staff. Your approval tonight on the application will move it forward to the Virginia Department of Education for their review. As we've been doing in the last couple of board meetings, we've been trying to give you some updates and highlights from our Fine Arts program because we don't often highlight them. So tonight, I'll give you our final report for the year, and it deals with our music department. At the primary school, choral music teacher, Ms. Madeline Harity, has students and their families engaged in an active family night called cardio drumming. Kindergartners performed an animal-themed music program called "Zuzical." The first graders performed the National Anthem at the Peninsula Pilots baseball game, and the second graders played instruments and danced to songs about our Four Seasons. At the elementary school, Ms. Harity had our third graders perform at the Veterans Day Ceremony at PES. Our fourth graders learned to play the recorder, and fifth-grade students performed an Earth Day-themed musical with skits that were written by the students. Thanks to a grant from the PEF, our fifth-grade students also learned how to play the ukulele this year. Under the direction of Mr. Brett Higginbotham, the PMS band performed in the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association District Eight Concert Assessment. They performed music classified at a grade-three difficulty level, which is the highest level for any middle school, and received straight superior ratings, the highest rating possible. They were the only middle school band to earn those ratings. Under the direction of Ms. Dara Sherman, 39 middle school choral students performed in the District Eight Choral Assessment. The choir received straight superior ratings in the area of performance and sight reading. Two PMS choral students auditioned and were selected to perform in the highly selective All-Virginia Choir. Because of these outstanding, high-level performances, the middle school band and choral music programs were awarded the distinction of being a blue-ribbon school by the Virginia Music Educators Association. At Pacosa High School, Ms. Ashley Ritchie and the musical theater students performed selfie at the VHSL One Act Play Competition, and everyone enjoyed an energetic rendition of Grease as this year's musical. Under the direction of Mr. Doug Spruill, the PHS band earned an excellent rating at the marching assessment and a superior rating at the state performance assessment. This is in addition to the countless competitions in the fall and numerous performances that they give at football games and other community activities. At the state choir assessment, Ms. Rebecca Wade guided the a cappella choir to scores of excellent on their staging work and superior in their sight singing. The combined women's choir received excellent and superior on their staging work and a superior in sight singing. Mrs. Wade is very proud of her students for performing live renditions of the National Anthem at many of our home athletic events this year. While there are many, many countless hours spent rehearsing and performing at each school, we could only highlight a few of these activities for you tonight. We'd like to thank all of our music teachers for their dedication and for providing a superior arts experience to all of our students. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you all for your support this year.
Any questions, comments there?
Just one. The middle school band, you said, was the only band to receive straight superior? Is that in the state or in our region, or?
That was at that particular competition.
Okay. Still great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Fox. Any public comment?
No, sir.
Um, thank you. Ms. Sheeler, could you walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Sure. The consent agenda will include the approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with, with the attached request, the approval of minutes of the May regular work session, the authorization for Pacosa High School to apply for membership with the Virginia High School League for 2019 and 2020, the authorization to dispose of surplus property, the authorization for superintendent to sign a renewal contract with Airmark for food service management, and the consideration of approval for the superintendent to execute a lease agreement for 2019 to 2020 with the Peninsula YMCA for before and after-school care.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers? Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Fratman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Other items, first up, consideration of approval of the appointment of student representative to school board for the school year 2019, 2020. Ms. Sheeler?
Yes, Kristi Hessel and I had the opportunity to speak for wonderful students that had applied for the job of student school board representatives, and it was really fun meeting them all, as always. It's kind of bittersweet because one only can be selected, but Jamie Steigerwald is a remarkable, remarkable woman, and we're very excited to have her onboard next year. Just to tell you a little bit about her, she is, we just don't understand how she goes to school and does all the rest of this, because she is the SCA sophomore class president, the DECA vice president, the principals on the principal advisory committee. She served as captain of her travel volleyball team. She attended the HOBY Leadership Conference at JMU this June. She's a manager for the varsity boys' basketball team, and she's in the key club, and she volunteers at the Riverside Hospital's physical therapy office. Wow, that's kind of what we said. Wow, how does this go as well as she does, and she does very well, so we're very excited to be able to work with her next year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Thank you all very much for taking us through that process successfully once again. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote?
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Fratman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye. Thank you. And next item, consideration of approval of the 2019, 2020 ESSA grant application. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I think that Dr. Fox did a good job of outlining that for, and it is enclosed in your board packet as a reading file. I just did want to highlight the fact that we are seeing that 34% decrease in funding, which it does impact us, so we are shifting funds so that we can cover that loss for next year. With all that said, I recommend approval of the ESSA grant as, application as presented this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the ESSA grant application? Second?
Second.
Questions there?
I just had a question. Is it sort of the good news and the bad news if we have a reduction of 34% in, and the decline in the number of school-aged children who live in poverty in the city? Plus's and minus's?
Well, I guess you could say it's nice that we have fewer students in poverty. It just impacts us financially.
I realize.
Especially because we didn't anticipate seeing that much of a decrease in it.
What had we budgeted for? Was there a specific number that I'm anticipating going into?
We, we always, we anticipate, keep it general line itemed at that amount, so you can write your budget based on that. They give us anticipated allocations come out. They just recently came out. That's what we then have to write the application based on. So last year, our total was around $160,000. This year, it's around...
Questions? Anybody else?
No details as yet, as we're pulling funds to make up for the deficit.
Yes, so we're, we're using, we're sorting through in part professional development funding because some of that would cover that, and also in terms of staffing, we're looking to find other funds to cover the staffing. We do see, moving into the next budget year, as we do our hires, we'll see some savings because typically now we're hiring people who, with some retirements, who had been with us a little longer, a little higher in the pay scale, so that gives us a little flexibility to absorb some of that, that cost that we'll now have to fund out of our own operating budget rather than federal funding.
Okay, do I have a motion? Well, actually, primaries, could you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Fratman? Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, consideration of approval for textbook adoption for Algebra I, Algebra II, Math VI, Math VII, English VI through VIII, culinary arts, business law, physics, and anatomy. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, so we have a number of textbooks that we are purchasing, the math ones in particular. These textbooks are now aligned with the new SOL, SOL or the new standards that we are teaching in our classroom. They have also been approved by the Department of Education as well. All of these textbooks have moved to our process, which includes them being available to the public to come and see these textbooks before we bring them to you for approval. Two sets of them, the Culinary Arts and Business Law, those are two new courses that you approved in the program of studies back in January, so these are the textbooks to support those two courses in particular. So with that, I bring forward the recommendation that you approve the textbooks that have been identified in your reading file.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments there?
I have a question as to whether the textbooks are also available.
Yeah. Yeah, we, what we purchase now are... Every student will get access to an online textbook.
Every student will get access to an online textbook.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Reimers?
Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy, six tag four dot four, promotion and retention, and six tag four dot five, graduation SOL requirements. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought these to you in first reading at your last meeting. Some of these are in alignment with new language that's being used, also current practice, and as well with the graduation SOL requirements. We've seen changes in those from the states aligning our policy with those and actually making it easier for us so that we don't have to change it quite as often in the way we've done the wording. So I recommend tonight approval of second reading to the school board policy changes.
Do I have a motion to approve those suggested changes? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And last item, consideration of approval of moving first reading of change policy manual to the second reading.
Yes, I actually want to work through these a little bit with you. So these are all of the policy changes that are coming as a result of the work of the General Assembly this year. They've all come from the school board attorneys. So we actually have a 54-page document in front of you. We're not going to go through all of that. I just want to highlight a few of those policy changes that might be of interest, most of interest to you and to our community as well. This is first reading, so you'll have the chance to read through the document before we come back in August. That's when you'll approve this. So I wanted to start on page 20, and this is rather pertinent to us as we're moving into the middle school modernization plan. What you see here is a section added to do with plans for the building, and this does now require that when any work is being done to the buildings, that we do have somebody with experience in planning for school safety work on the plans for the building. So I can reassure you that Waller-Todd-Sattler Architects are well aware of this law, and they do have people involved in the planning for our renovation that will address any of the safety issues that they need to. But I've actually had some people in the community that were aware of this law ask me about it, so I wanted to make sure that I highlighted this one with you. So on page 22, we talked about this briefly as you approved this student handbook this year, but I just want to highlight the fact because this would be true of people attending our football games, that we don't allow any tobacco product to include any nicotine or vapor products, so that we are preventing vaping from occurring on our school property per the Code of Virginia. So I thought that was important to note for our community. Moving on to page 26, this is policy 6 dash 1.5 that deals with the school year and the school day. We have two ones of note. The first one that you see in there is actually a result of what we experienced this past year. As you well remember, we had a mandatory evacuation put in place by the governor, and that meant that we needed to shut our schools down for a number of days because almost our entire city was in the evacuation zone, so we couldn't exactly hold school while people were being told to evacuate from the city. So what this legislation enables us to do is for up to five days, if we're unable to make up those days, then we will be in essence held harmless for those five days. And that, what's important here is that's true for funding, so our funding is based on our average daily attendance, so if we simply don't go for five days and they don't say it's okay, you'll still get your ADM, we could lose funding because it would take five days away of attendance for us, if that makes sense to you. So what this does is actually waives that for us. For the community, there's a phone behind the dais that was ringing, but it seems to have stopped. So anyways, I wanted to know, that was actually a direct response of what occurred to us this fall, and it was nice to see the legislators supported that. We, a number of us brought that forward to them because it was a challenge when we were at the mandatory evacuation. The other one is under the school calendar, and I know some folks in the community are aware of this fact, that now Virginia Code does allow school divisions to begin up to 14 days before the Labor Day weekend to start school, as long as they have a four-day weekend over Labor Day. So we're going to start discussions in terms of the superintendents because we do have a regional program in New Horizons to have some conversation about what approach we might take to this, and then I will be coming back to the board, and we'll be having some conversations with our community to see if we want to adjust our calendar start date. That is not, that would not occur until the earliest for the fall of 2020. We're starting the day after Labor Day this fall, but I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that change. The last one I just want to mention is page 32. This is a real short one, but just as we talk about language that we use in our schools, we now will switch to calling our guidance counselors, actually, school counselors. That's actually a change that's come to us through code, so I just wanted to note that in case you hear that in the community, you know they're one in the same, but it's a name change for us. So again, there's some other ones in here, and if you do have any questions after you get a chance to look at them, please do not hesitate to contact me, but these are the ones I think that would interest the community. So with that, I just recommend moving your first reading, your changes to second reading.
Do I have a motion to move from first to second reading? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions there?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. And communication, Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work this year. We ended yet another successful school year, and any of those walking from the high school, thank you for our wonderful graduation event. It was wonderful to see our students walk across the stage after all the work that our teachers and our staff members have put into making that happen, starting at some in our preschool program and others in our kindergarten program. And I do want to continue to encourage the community, we will keep our PMS Modernization webpage up to date through the summer, so for them not to hesitate, take a look at that page as we, if they want to check the status of the project. Thank you to board members for all of your support and hard work this year, and I hope everybody has a great summer.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of echoing what Dr. Parrish said, just thank you for another great year. It seems like last month, it was September of 2018, kind of a cool football weather. Not today, it wasn't too cool, but it seemed like it was just a month ago. So thanks to all the parents, even grandparents, and teachers, and administrators, it's been another great year. Every year, I wonder if we can keep on doing it, and we keep on doing it. So I think that's a great accolade to all of us. And $87,675.92 in donations this year, that seems to be incredible. I know about 60 percent of it was PTO and PEF, which are great organizations. Thank you so much for all the work you put into that. That's still about 40 grand that came from a lot of smaller sources. There's a lot of pages here, so I think it says a lot about our community, and I'm really proud to be a part of you all, so see you next year.
Thank you. Ms. Hessel?
I agree with Mr. Holcomb. Do you have any additional comments?
Well said.
Mr. Jordan?
Congrats to our recent college graduates. One of the most enjoying parts about graduation for me is looking at the scholarship page of all the recent successes of our college graduates, and I believe it totaled $1.9 million this year in scholarships and grants to help further education. And it was a vast array of folks attending four-year universities, but there's also a host of, I think we had each one of the service, military service, and attendants with grads getting ready to transition right into the military, and then those attending vocational and trade school as well. So it was really nice to see that. Thanks.
Troutman?
Whole bunch of things. First of all, the presentation on the music. My sister's a music teacher, so I'm a big fan of all the things going on, and congratulations to the music and choral group and all the different schools. We have this sitting on our desk, the VSBA Special Edition Newsletter. I got this at the house the other day, being a part of the Virginia School Board, and Pacosa is recognized for our Cool Beans efforts, and so it's really nice to see at a state level getting recognized for some of the fun special projects that we're doing every day in our school. So another piece of that puzzle. The graduation attendance was great, not only to the recent graduates, but to all the moms and dads and support families that helped get these kids through. Congratulations in their future endeavors, be it in military service, vocational, or technical college or university, good luck. Also want to say congratulations to the staff because great speeches that were given by our superintendent, by multiple students that just had great inspirational comments for the students that are graduating, and if they take hold of some of those comments, it'll be life-changing. So thank you Chairman Carter for also speaking there and giving some good words of advice. Appreciate that. Beyond that, wish everybody a very happy summer and look forward to serving next year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sheeler?
Yeah, I don't have very much to add to that. I did want to congratulate Jamie Stagerwald for coming on as, onto the school board as a student representative next year. Looking forward to working with her. I'm also thrilled to hear about the middle school choral competition, superior rating. Go, Mr. Higginbotham. And under Mr. Spruul, the marching band having a superior rating at the state competition, very exciting, always exciting, as I was once a band member, band, band member, always a band booster member.
There's always a lot of good stuff that all are amazing. It's an amazing staff. It's an amazing support structure that we have out there, and I know a lot of times it's the whole squeak hill gets the grease kind of deal, but we've still got three good wheels going, but it's, you know, sometimes something negative can bubble up to the top, and that seems to get everybody's attention, but I like it when we can pop those bubbles, resolve it, and get back to all the good that is happening in all of our schools, up at the office level, at the studio level. It's just, the community is, takes everybody, and I think it's a fair, everybody's involvement and support, and good luck to everybody, and I hope you have a great summer. Any material for board review?
Not this evening.
Thank you. Then we will adjourn to the work session, and we'll talk school board organization for the next year. I am melting. [laughing].[1787.54]